The afternoon, we'll call the meeting of the Johnson County Community College Board of Trustees to order for our August 2015 meeting. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first item on our agenda is roll call and recognition of visitors.
Okay, this evening's visitors include Dick Carter and Eric Sweden.
Next item is our open forum section. The open forum section of the board agenda is a time for members of the community to provide comments to the board. There will be one open forum meeting during each regularly scheduled board meeting. Comments are limited to five minutes unless a significant number of people plan to speak. In that instance, the chair may limit a person's comments to less than five minutes. In order to be recognized, an individual must register at the door at each board meeting prior to the open forum session. When addressing the board, registered speakers should be respectful and civil and should not address matters related to individual personnel matters with the college. As a practice, the college does not respond in this setting when the matters concerned personnel issues or matters are being addressed through our established grievance or suggestion processes or are otherwise the subject of review by the college or the board. We have no registered speakers for tonight's meeting, so we'll close the open forum session of the agenda. Dr. Sobchak, awards and recognitions.
Trustee Musa, we have no awards or recognitions for this evening.
Thank you. We're ready for the college lobbyists report. Mr. Carter, welcome.
Thank you, Mr.
Please enlighten us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will enlighten you very briefly this evening as this report surrounds mostly the conversation about budget items and revenue. The state's fiscal year started on July 1, and everyone was eagerly watching the end of the month financial report for the state on July 31. Just a day before that report came out, the governor's office needed to cut about $50 million from the budget. As it was passed, that number ended up being about $62.6 million. Some of those dollars are just transfers, and so they're probably not, I don't know if they'd be real cash transfers or not, as far as the budget's concerned. There are some hard line cuts, though, one of which is $1.9 million to higher education. It was the only cut to higher education. And just to remind you what that cut was, that is the line item for the GED Accelerator Program. Now, that's probably really not a cut for our institution because when the legislation was passed a year ago, we were not included in that particular bill. We were successful in being added to the statute this year, but since that money will not be in the budget, it's not a cut to our budget or to our take, at least at this point. Then the next day, the end of July, revenues were down slightly. Again, when we're talking single digits on a state budget that's half a billion dollars, or $6 billion, pardon me, we don't really look at 3.7 as being a large number. However, it's important to keep in mind that one of the things that went into effect on July 1 was the increased sales tax rate, increase in liquor and tobacco tax, as well as some other revenue providing mechanisms. They're not counting the number in July to include all of those increases. Some retailers may not have actually been able to program their registers or to put in place the new sales tax rate. So we will see at the end of August, or rather, the beginning of September, as you'll see here in just a minute, what the actual new numbers look like as far as revenue comes in for the state of Kansas. Hopefully, that will be good since a lot of folks buy a lot of back-to-school supplies in the month of August, but it'll also give us a chance to see how things perform and if we can identify leakage over the state line for population-dense areas like Johnson County. The other interesting thing that I put in the report, just to note, because it's interesting to me, someone who follows the budget numbers, is that we're going to be moving, Department of Revenue has indicated that they're going to be moving to a first-of-the-month look-back instead of an end-of-the-month look-back. And that allows the state to book other numbers that aren't simply or purely sales or income tax numbers. And I think you can think along the lines of fee-funded agencies, whether it's license fees, registration fees, things like that. Again, fee-funded agencies typically build their budgets around the fees that they charge to become self-sustaining, but once any dollar hits the state level, it becomes the state's money. So I think that's the reason we'll be looking at that, to see if that makes a difference in the way that the revenues come in each month. The other thing that happened just this past week or last week was the bonding of the capers money. Those bonds did sell. It was a billion-dollar bond to help fund the unfunded component of capers liability. That will be interesting to see how that continues to play out with the state's bond rating for other projects that may or may not be occurring as legislators plan for the future. The final thing I would say is there have been no interim meetings yet, at least as far as the ones that we'll be tracking on behalf of the college. Some of those committees haven't even been filled with legislators, or they have not been appointed yet, to committees, and we're waiting for the committee dates to come out as well. The final thing, then, would be that the legislative task force that's made up of a few of the cabinet folks on the administrative level here at the college gather a couple of times a year to discuss strategies and how we can improve the legislative advocacy process. And we did that this afternoon, and we're able to have a look forward as we think about what's going to be happening in 2016. And I think you'll see some more output from that as we move on. But we talked about things like some of the advocacy efforts that we've done here on campus, things like the Legislative Breakfast, things that we do in Topeka. And so it was a good meeting, and I'm looking forward to the next time we gather to continue to move that product forward.
Questions? Dr. Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Two things, Mr. Carter. While 3.7 million may not seem to be a lot compared to the budget, a million dollars is still a million dollars. I guess, and I haven't kept track myself, so shame on me, but I'd be interested in knowing what the 24-month trend has been in Kansas with revenue. My sense is that more months have been below projections than at or above, and how we compare to the seven or eight states around us. Because I know nationally, we've seen reports of some states doing very well recently, and yet Kansas continues to be below projections. So I'm interested in the trend of what's happening to our revenues. Secondly, who's responsible for filling the committees?
House and Senate leadership fills the...
Is the idea that those committees were to have met over the summertime?
No, the trend has been that the committees are meeting later in the fall. It just depends on the nature of the committee. The Legislative Budget Committee met briefly already to just take a look at the year-end finances and right before the budget cuts. So that committee is pretty standard as far as who the members are, but once we get all of the topics and staff in place, they'll begin meeting probably October, November, December.
Thank you.
Other questions? If not, thank you. You did lighten us up today. Thank you, Dick, for your work in Topeka and wherever it takes place, because it's an important part of the future of the college. The next item on the agenda is our annual legal requirement to hold a public hearing on the budget for our fiscal year 2016, which would go from July 1, 2015, through June 30, 2016. I'm going to make some preliminary comments. We'll have staff here available for questions. Obviously, members of the board can ask questions, and then anybody from the public. One of the most important responsibilities of the board is to establish each fiscal year a budget running from July 1 through June 30. Our budget process never really stops. It goes on throughout the year as it's our responsibility to watch expenditures and watch revenues and identify what will be needed in the coming year. Most importantly, as trustees, our obligation is to balance revenues and expenses and establish a reserve fund that prudently takes care of our future needs. We started on the fiscal year 2016 budget last fall concerning budget guidelines and priorities, particularly in light of the college's strategic plan and the key performance indicators we have adopted. We've been ably led by Dr. Sobchak and his cabinet, particularly Barbara Larson and Rachel Leirs, and they are available for questions. Our budget guidelines have been part of the public record for about 10 months and established parameters for each college department to review its mission and the resources needed to fulfill that mission. The budget guidelines included increasing our ending balance and adding to our reserves, maintaining the same mill levy that we had for fiscal year 2015, maintaining the same level of staffing, the people that make up the college, using a priority-based budgeting process to decide what are the true priorities of the college and where we need to put our resources. We assumed initially an assessed valuation increase of 4%. That ended up 6.6% in the budget, once the county appraiser had reported on the appraised values as of January 1, 2016. We assumed no change in aid from the state of Kansas, which currently makes up about 15% of our general fund budget. We assumed student tuition would increase by $3 a credit hour for in-county and in-state students, and by $8 a credit hour for out-of-state students. Those guidelines led to a proposed budget that maintains the same mill levy as last year. Most of our assets are people. 77% of the total budget authority of $140 million goes to salary and benefits. 55% of our funding comes from property taxes, from people who own property in Johnson County, whether they're homeowners, or businesses, or warehouses, or apartments, or hotels. A homeowner with a home value of $250,000, the average value of a home in Johnson County, will pay about $272 for all the operations of this college for the 2016 fiscal year. Johnson County residents will be asked to pay $91 a credit hour for this school year. Out-of-county Kansans will pay $106 a credit hour, and out-of-state students will pay $214 a credit hour under this budget. The budget includes a 2.75% salary increase on average for faculty and staff. At our May meeting, we adopted a management budget to allow management to begin the process of planning for the fiscal year, and we're now coming to the point in the process where we will hold the official public hearing, and later in the meeting, we will officially consider the budget for the 2016 year. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to comment on the proposed budget, please come to the podium to your left and state your name and address. It's certainly not a requirement, but if you have comments about where we're spending too much, where we're taxing too much, or where we need to cut, if you would provide alternatives to the board, that would be the most helpful part of this process. We have to balance the budget. We would do it even if it wasn't the law. It happens to be the law, so I think we will do it, and we intend to establish reserves that make sense for the college and our taxpayers. I now officially open the public hearing for the 2016 fiscal year budget. Is there anyone in the public that wants to make any comments on the budget? Second call? Anyone that would like to make comments on the budget? If not, I would note that these types of hearings seldom entice somebody to come forward and make specific comments. I want to make sure everybody in the public and everybody here knows, we hear comments about the budget every day or every week as board of trustee members. We listen to people, whether they're on campus or off campus. We hear about where things are headed and what we need to do, and so the lack of a public hearing, I don't think, is in any way indicative of the lack of public interest about the college. But there being no one to speak, I will officially close the public hearing, and the budget will be considered during the management committee report, which is the next item on our agenda. I will turn to trustee Cook for the management committee recommendations, and as we start that, I'm going to, there's an item on page 10, which is the bid packages between $25 and $100,000, normally not voted on by this board. I want to disclose that I have a conflict. I represent, my law firm represents, the winner of a bid reported on page 10, so if there is any conversation or vote on that, I will not participate. Other than that, Dr. Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The management committee did meet on Wednesday, August 5. Trustees Lindstrom and Cross were participants in that management meeting. We have about five items for your attention tonight. The first is the issue of the capital outlay general obligation bonds. You'll remember that we've had a number of meetings regarding our infrastructure and capital bonds at our board retreats and over the last, actually, more than a year. We talked a lot about where we were going with all of this in our next 50 years. I would remind you that when we talk about this particular item, it's just one piece of that next 50 years, and we have other items that we'll be dealing with at a later time. This proposal talks about taking on a $9.8 million additional debt, and while we have discussed it thoroughly in a number of meetings, we felt, not only in board retreats but in the management committee, we felt it would be important to take a few minutes tonight for Barbara Larson and Rachel Leirs to explain briefly, at least for the benefit of the public, the needs for this $9.8 million campaign, and to answer any questions that you may have about this significant issue. So Barbara, if you would start us off with that, that would be helpful.
Thank you, Dr. Cook. Again, many of you have seen much of this, but because of the size, the significance, and what will be happening on our campus in the next several years to address infrastructure needs, we thought it was important to go through it. We've talked about the age of our facilities, incredibly well-maintained campus, but the fact is, we have a number of buildings that are now 43 years old, and approximately of our 1.8 million square feet on campus, roughly a third of it was constructed prior to 1990. And so certainly, there are some systems to address. Last fall, we had an outside engineering firm, 360 Energy Engineers, complete a retrocommissioning study focused on two of the six original buildings, Commons and the GEB building, the building that we're in now. These represented opportunities for improvement, and they are very highly-used and visible buildings. The objectives of the retrocommissioning study were to identify operational deficiencies, identify opportunities for energy conservation, and to see where system performance could be improved. So this was a very in-depth study of two of the buildings, and much of our proposal is an extrapolation of the needs identified from this. Several key findings, that air distribution systems are adequate, they're well-maintained. However, they are outdated, and they are certainly, they do not represent the technology that is available now in terms of building automation. Poor chilled water control, so some valves that are, as they say, primarily antiquated and inefficient by today's standards. And ineffective heating systems, the original variable air volume boxes, the terminal boxes that are really controlling the temperature and airflow in individual spaces and offices and classrooms were largely deficient. It is very difficult, due to age, to maintain them, and replacement parts are lacking. So, you've also seen this, the current age of HVAC equipment by building. This represents our campus, and largely, those ages represent the construction date because, for the most part, we have original systems. Not that we haven't changed out some equipment as needed, as things were broken. Trustee Lindstrom's suggestion at management committee was that we show what this same presentation would look like after this project, after we complete this, and so this is our attempt to show you that we would be moving a number of these items to that newer quadrant down at the lower left, and that is that we would address much of the equipment. That is not to say that every piece of equipment in all of these buildings would be changed out, but we would essentially be starting with new equipment in our oldest facilities. A picture of a variable air volume box, because we have many of them. They, again, are the localized source for controlling the temperature and the airflow in individual spaces, and so this is an expensive endeavor because it means touching just about every room, going above ceiling tiles or ceilings to change out and repair equipment. It's not all about the HVAC equipment, although that is clearly the bulk of this $9.8 million infrastructure project that we're proposing we proceed with. There are LED light conversions, $300,000 there, roofs and windows. We have some skylights that are original that need to be changed out, masonry and concrete work, and then some overhead doors and door replacements. So again, largely HVAC is the bulk of this infrastructure project that is proposed. In terms of payback from increased efficiencies, we feel that this is very conservative, based on the work from the engineers that we've worked with, as well as our own staff reviewing this. Out of about $1.9 million of these improvements, we see paybacks. These are the best paybacks at roughly $350,000 in energy savings from these improvements. And again, we hear that energy costs continue to go up by above the rate of inflation. The source of the financing, and Rachel Leirs will speak more to this, is the capital outlay fund. The board has approved the use of .5 mil for the capital outlay. It is approved through 2016, 17. In September, we will be coming back to the management committee and to the board about, with a capital outlay resolution, to extend this for the five-year length of the financing. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Rachel Leirs. Again, she will briefly give you the presentation that was given by Bill Henderson from Piper Jaffray at the last management committee meeting.
Okay, as Dr. Larson indicated, this presentation was put together by the college's longtime financial advisor with Piper Jaffray, Bill Henderson, and prepared, presented to the management committee when we met last week. The only edits that I have made to the presentation are with regards to the timing, which will be, timing and next steps, which will be on the last slide here of the presentation. So again, just as an overview, as you've heard several times, we do have a number of capital projects currently under consideration, and so as such, I've been working with Bill, the folks at Piper Jaffray, and also with our bond counsel at Gilmore &amp; Bell to identify an appropriate plan of finance to fund those projects. And as we discussed at the management committee, the state statutes do provide for us to borrow against the existing capital outlay levy to provide funds for the projects, and the levy would back the additional debt that the college would incur. As you know, the college currently has the levy of .5 mils in existence. That was adopted in 2012 and was a five-year resolution running out to 2017. Very simply, by dedicating half of the existing levy to repayment of the debt, a quarter mil then, the college can fund the projects that have been identified. The next slide simply summarizes some of the highlights of this statute. Again, the college is able to issue the capital outlay general obligation bonds. There is a publication requirement, such that after the resolution is adopted, it will be published in a newspaper for three consecutive weeks. And this is where, really, subsequent to the management committee meeting, a couple of things were clarified with Gilmore &amp; Bell and with Piper Jaffray, such that there is a 60-day protest period after the third week of the publication time, and that is a 60-day period to allow taxpayers, obviously, to object to the extension of the levy. So we will have that in place. And then, after that, we will need to have, really, a second step, as Barbara mentioned, to effectively rescind the levy that's currently in existence, which expires in 2017, and renew it for the five-year period from 2016 to 2021 to match the maturity period of the debt. So that's really, I think, a next step and a subsequent resolution for the board to Again, just a couple of additional notes on the plan of finance. These are general obligation bonds, so they will likely receive the AAA rating assigned by Moody's to the college's existing general obligation debt. Because of the strong credit rating and the limited term of the bonds, these cannot have a maturity period that exceeds five years. We do believe that the interest costs incurred will be extremely low. I think the amount that has been factored into the cash flows in the presentation is about 1.4-5%. So really, we feel like it's a very strong plan, and timing-wise works out very well as far as timing to get the funds secured to receive with the projects. Just a couple notes on the sizing of the issue. There is a provision in tax law that allows tax-exempt borrowers, tax-exempt issuers, to issue up to $10 million on a calendar-year basis as bank-qualified. And so the college has developed this plan with a bank qualification contemplated. And as the second bullet indicates, essentially, what this does is it provides you with a wider base of potential bidders on the bonds, a wider investor base because of the bank qualification. So the estimate there is, you know, because of the short term that we're looking at anyway, approximately savings of maybe 10 basis points. But, you know, it's not a significant number, but I think we'll take advantage of whatever we can get with this opportunity. Again, just a couple of notes about the $10 million cap in the calendar year. You're all aware that we did recently refinance some existing debt in calendar 2015, obviously just a month or so ago, but because that was previously a bank-qualified issue, it doesn't count, if you will, towards the $10 million. Only about $60,000 of the issuance costs associated with that count towards the new $10 million threshold for the year. So we're well within, with the $9.8 million project list, and the $60,000, we're well within the $9,940,000 limit for the calendar year. The next slide is a cash flow analysis. Again, this was prepared by Piper Jaffray, and it simply illustrates that with the .25 or the quarter mil versus the assessed valuation, that the levy would more than generate the funds needed to service the debt. Another note on this slide, I think it's been very conservatively prepared in that we didn't even contemplate an increase in assessed valuation going forward. This is the timeline that was shared at the management committee meeting last week, which assumed that we would adopt the resolution authorizing the sale this evening. That's the resolution that was included in the packet, and that we would move forward to sell the bonds on October 22, which is the date of the October bond meeting, board meeting, excuse me, and close and have funds available about November 11. However, because of what Barbara alluded to and what I was speaking to a minute ago about the protest period and the extension of the existing levy, this is going to take a little bit longer. We're essentially going to be moving back about 30 days this evening. If we proceed with adopting the resolution authorizing the sale, we would do that at the next management committee meeting, which is September 2. We would have the second resolution to extend the capital outlay levy. Again, not a tax increase, but just an extension of the current half-mil arrangement. That would be brought to you for consideration at the meeting on the 17th of September. Then we would have our three-week publication period on or about September 21, 28, and October 5. The 60-day protest period would follow, and then would be on the date of the December board meeting, that we would be able to sell the bonds and have proceeds in hand right after the 1st of the year.
While you're thinking of your questions, I would just like to review a couple of things. For the benefit of the public, we've had discussion on this board about that AAA, that capital A, small double A rating. Many of the public is used to a triple capital A rating that some governmental agencies have, but that A, little AA, is the highest rating for community colleges, so I want to affirm that the college does have the highest rating it qualifies for due to the terrific fiscal management of the college staff. A second point is that Rex and his team have done an exceptional job of holding together the equipment that Barbara and Rachel have talked about, particularly in those buildings over 40 years, and frankly, it's getting more and more difficult to find parts and the right kind of duct tape to hold all of those pieces together. But Rachel and Barbara have also indicated, I think, a key point, that this is really driven by energy efficiencies. And... And while we have some projections of cost savings, those, as Rachel has said, are very conservative, and we feel that we'll experience energy efficiencies to the total budget like we have in the past. We have taken action previously on certain pieces of equipment and certain decisions and have realized the savings that have been projected by staff. So I just wanted to point that out for the public, that it's time to take care of outdated equipment. And with that, if any board members have questions of Barbara and Rachel, this would be a good time to ask them.
Questions?
If I may, Mr. Chair. How much of the current state budget situation and our ability through the guidelines and other measures that we take to fund our budget, I mean, how much of that impacts our need to go out and borrow this money for capital outlay or otherwise?
Let me start with that answer. With the 5 tenths-
I wasn't talking to you. I thought it was Barbara.
I know, but let me say if I, I want to clarify so that I know. Of the 5 tenths mil levy that we can use for capital outlay, we still have half of that amount in the budget for ongoing projects in capital outlay. And some folks say, well, why can't we use that capital outlay for other expenditures? That's not the way the tax law is written. This goes strictly for capital outlay. So this projection just uses half of our authority to pay back the debt. Barbara?
And to your point, Trustee Cross, we do not have the kind of reserves in capital outlay built up that we could fund this $9.8 million upfront. And we have, of course, been working as a board, as an institution, to restore our general fund reserves. We're not at the point yet where we would, where I would recommend that we use reserves for this project. And of course, with money being as inexpensive as it is, we see an opportunity here.
Dr. Sobchak.
And Trustee Cross, you alluded to the situation in Kansas as potentially impacting our situation. Keep in mind that only 15% to 17% of our revenue comes from the state, but about 65% comes from the local property owner. And the stability of the Johnson County community and their support for education makes our bonds really so highly rated, combined with how we manage things. But in Johnson County, we're very fortunate to have this kind of support.
I concur, and I appreciate the answer of the management chair, and I appreciate the board indulging my humor. And I want to assure the chair of the management committee, but thank you, Vice President Larson and Mr. Sobchak. Dr. Sobchak.
Trustee Nistrom.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to echo some of the comments that Management Chair Cook had mentioned, that the assumptions were conservative in rates, in operating savings, and then in ongoing maintenance of the equipment. And this also, I think it's important to note that it was before the management committee on two occasions because we had a transition in trustees, and so it went back. Staff thought that it was important that it go back before the current management committee, and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Trustee Sharp.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to ask a quick question about interest rates and how they relate to bond ratings. We heard earlier in Mr. Carter's presentation about the interest rate that the $1 billion bond issue that the state got was 4.6 something? How does that compare dollar-wise for the taxpayer when we're getting 1.49% on bonds? What would, if we were getting a 4.6% interest, what would that dollar difference look like? Just around number? Millions?
At least a half a million dollars.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'd have to put pencil to paper and do the calculation, but at 1.49, 1.5%, that we're estimating on $9.8 million, it's very cheap.
Okay. I guess I just wanted to make the point of prudent fiscal management and working hard to restore our reserves, working hard to be good stewards of taxpayer money saves a lot of money in the end for taxpayers. So I thank you to your team and to the folks at Piper Jaffray for doing such a great job for us and for the longstanding fiscal management of the college, the folks that are on those teams. Thanks.
Other questions for Dr. Larson or Ms. Leers? If not, oh, Trustee Drummond.
Mr. Chair, I'd just like to make a, first of all, great job in keeping under the $10 million cap and getting all this in. That's really phenomenal and great. My response to this is not so much to this, but if you look at the work you've done, the return on investment comes best to us on the lighting upgrades and LED conversions. And we're doing this because we need to do this, and we'll save the college money, we'll save the community money, we'll save the tuition increases. My thought is, I know we can't do it within this bond issue, but if there is a way we could find some more money to be able to invest more in the LED conversions, then that would save us a lot more money down the road than even these things would. These things are mitigated a lot by, we just have to do them.
Yes.
And as we invested money the last time around, as we invested money the last time around, we found that the same equation worked, that we got our best investment return on what we did in the lighting and those kinds of energy projects. And again, we're seeing that here. So I think if we could find a way somehow to double our investment or increase our investment, then we know energy's going to continue to go up. Therefore, if we can invest at where the energy's going up the most, then we can mitigate the cost of that energy long-term. So it's just a suggestion. I wasn't involved with these discussions because I was gone, and I apologize for bringing this up at the last moment. So something for us to think about.
No, I appreciate that. And we've done a lot of LED conversion. I don't have a good handle on what percentage we've changed out, but we, this is in many ways a continuation of things that we've done.
Yes.
But I appreciate the comment.
Thank you.
Other questions? Are you going to make a motion to adopt the resolution?
I am.
At this point? I'll save my comments for discussion. Is there a motion then?
It is the recommendation of the management committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to adopt a resolution authorizing the offering for sale of capital outlay general obligation bonds and the approximate principal amount of $9,800,000, and I'll make that motion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? I will make a couple of points, I think, on this that staff and Rex and, I don't know how much we'll save on our duct tape budget, but it will probably be considerable. First of all, Rachel, you mentioned the capital outlay fund. The .5 mils was voted on in 2012. Just make a point, we have to reauthorize it every five years at a minimum. It's been in place for years or decades. So it's not a new levy. It wasn't a new tax in 2012. It's not a new tax if we extend it next month. Our budget goals have been to increase the reserves in the general fund budget so we can spend capital money on capital, which is a good thing. This is part of that effort. 10 basis points that we can save by using the bank-qualified, which I wasn't aware of before, but that's .1%. Is that right? So for laypeople like me, it's 0.1% of a lower interest rate, again, to benefit taxpayers by fitting into those parameters. People should know we're an all-electric campus. It was designed that way from the start, so we don't, we don't have options right now to move to natural gas or nuclear energy or wind or solar without significant conversion costs. So we're somewhat at the rates of the electric utility. And I also want to point out, our overall debt level, to the credit of previous boards, if you look at the budget we will consider later, the total revenue bonds outstanding in 2015 is $18,775,000. On a $140 million general fund budget, it's a very low debt level. People here have been very careful, and when you can borrow money for capital projects at 1.4, 1.3, 1.2%, it is a great benefit to the taxpayers, provided we're putting it in the right place, and I think this is the right place. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chair, I would say that I'll take responsibility for the mil levy authorization. We should have caught that in management. That's my fault. It does extend it 30 days. I was concerned that we would lose time, but it just moves everything back 30 days. But we didn't catch that that five-year authorization needed to be aligned with the bond issue, and I'll take responsibility for that.
I think that's a normal human factor in all these things. These are complicated transactions. So there's no further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much. We'll proceed accordingly. The second recommendation was for the transfer of funds from the college to the foundation. Rachel Leers explained that revenue generated from the recycling efforts of the JCC Center for Sustainability is considered public funds of the college and are recorded on the college's books in the Sustainability Initiatives Fund. The Sustainability Committee has requested that $9,000 of the recycling proceeds be transferred to the JCC Foundation for Scholarships. So therefore, it is the recommendation of the management committee that the Board of Trustees authorize the transfer of $9,000 from the Sustainability Initiatives Fund to the Johnson County Community College Foundation for Student Scholarships, and I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Any discussion? Any discussion? Dr. Cook?
Mr. Chair, I will say that having attended the all-staff breakfast this week, I had the opportunity to visit with Chef Aaron Prater and Jay Antel and Claire Zimmerman of the farm, along with some students, and learned about our full-cycle process. And I think this is certainly so significant that we could do a program of some kind to the community. But what that means is that as we recover waste product, and at that breakfast, for example, everything, plastic forks and spoons and plates and food and everything that was left over went into a container, we have a fabulous shredder on campus which shreds that product that then goes into a three-ben process of composting. Compost eventually goes to our farm that Claire manages, and then we raise product, and then that product goes back to our food service department. And Chef Aaron Prater is very instrumental in that. So the full circle is, we take our waste, we recycle it, we turn that into food, we eat it, we process it, and we do it all over again, full circle. All of that is done on campus, and it's really a fabulous project. So the $9,000, I think, is, everybody deserves a lot of credit for that, but I'm really pleased with how our sustainability initiative is so successful.
I understand some of the board materials are used directly as compost fertilizer.
Particularly verbiage.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried.
Thank you. Earlier, we held a public hearing for the fiscal year 2015-16 budget. The public hearing represents the culmination of the budget process, as our chair has explained, that transpires over many months, beginning with budget guidelines that were first presented to the Board of Trustees in December of last year. These budget guidelines provided a policy framework for building the fiscal year 15-16 budget, and they were considered and adopted by the board at the December 18, 2014 meeting. Based on the updated information over the course of the budget development, adjustments were made to assess valuation increases in state funding, as our chair stated earlier. So therefore, as a result of the public hearing and all the work we put into the budget, it is a recommendation of the management committee that the Board of Trustees accept the 2015-16 fiscal year budget as published, which includes total property tax levied of $81,418,530 for 2016 compared to $76,491,162 in 2015, and does hereby certify said budget to the county clerk of Johnson County, Kansas, for collection in the matter prescribed by law, and I'll make that motion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the 2015-2016 budget as published and as considered at the public hearing. Is there any discussion? Trustee Cross.
Mr. Chair, if I may, thank you, and thank you again to Management Chair, Trustee Cook. My couple of comments are, I can't help but feel the borrowing that we need to do now in any capacity, and I know there's differences in the mills and the structure of our budget, but I feel that it's related to the state budget issue or, frankly, the lack of political will to go to the public and ask them to help pay for things that go on at this school. Now, that is to say that I am very proud to serve on this board, and having been with this board two and a half years, I think that this board and its administration and leadership does everything it can to make this college work in the environment, political and social that we live in. But I think that we're borrowing this money unnecessarily. I did vote for it, so I'm on record for that. But my next question is, predictably, as probably most of you know, why do we feel it necessary each year to have it as a requirement in our budget guidelines that we raise tuition and fees on students automatically $3 each year?
We've discussed that at various retreats and other proposals, trying to figure out what is the right balance between what a student contributes to his or her education and what the taxpayers contribute and what we get from other funds, whether it's federal or state, direct revenues or grant funds. I don't think any of us have a perfect judgment as to what that balance is. The amount that our students have contributed in, as a percentage of their educational costs, has gone up since the recession hit. It's in the low 20s, I believe, now. I know when I was in school, which was a long time ago, the Board of Regents thought 25% was the right amount. I don't know what the right amount is, and I know you've expressed concern that several of the board members have, that community college education be both accessible and affordable. I think that, from a personal standpoint, that contributing to your educational costs makes you more focused on it and may make you take it more seriously. One of the reasons I'm not a huge part of the stampede toward free college, I think it's important that people contribute to what they're receiving. I'm not completely comfortable that we have built-in increases every year, but I think the alternative is a significant mil levy increase. If we didn't borrow this 9.8 million and raised it from the taxpayers, we'd need over one mil of property tax levy. I'm comfortable taking the increase in assessed valuation because I think we contribute to that, the growth in Johnson County and the growth in the tax base. But I think we, I think this budget is the best mix we could come up with, with the contribution from taxpayers, knowing that the state is not going to contribute any more than it has and what we ask of our students. And I'll reiterate to everybody here in this room and listening that the more we can do in the foundation so that we can continue to offer more than $1 million worth of scholarships, will make more and more students comfortable that the $3 a credit hour is a good investment and will help them pay for it. That's my personal thoughts. If someone else on the board wants to comment, certainly welcome that. Okay?
I thank you, Mr. Chair, if I may. I just, I do think that in doing so, we're just losing ground on the bargain that we offer. I think that this college is a private-public compact, and that we should invest in our future, but just not continuously on the backs of our students. With that said, I know that possibly with myself excluded, no one fights harder for this college than you, and it's not directed at anybody here. It's just a, perhaps a frustration of mine. You all have addressed it, I'm just merely, as you all understand, Mr. Chair, building a record here, but I thank you for addressing it.
I can add, we are working on a presentation with regard to tuition and analysis of what we charge versus other institutions, so we'll be looking at that fairly soon, probably at management committee to start it off with.
I think the reality is, we are still a comparatively great deal for the quality of faculty, the quality of education you get here. I agree with those who say comparatively isn't the right way to measure it because we cannot continue to have the cost of higher education increase at the rate it's been increasing over the last 20 years. Just because we're cheaper than others doesn't mean we're as good as we can be, and I think that's part of our key performance indicator quality approach is to find better ways to do it so we can maybe in future years not increase tuition and give a breather.
Yes, accessibility is very important for community colleges. A $3 increase on $91 total probably comes in about 4% or 5%. That's a fairly decent rate of increase when it comes to what students are paying for tuition across the state. So we work pretty hard at trying to keep it accessible, but it's always something that we need to focus on with regard to Trustee Cross's comments. It's certainly something that we'll be giving a lot of scrutiny to.
Other comments on the budget? If not, all in favor of the 2015-2016 budget as published in the subject of today's public hearing, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay?
No.
Motion carries unanimously, oh, I'm sorry, carries six to one with Trustee Cross voting no.
Thank you. There were two recommendations based on bids for requests for proposals. The first was a bid to purchase five vehicles for campus services and two vehicles for the police department. Also included in the bid are the trade-in allowances for the scheduled replacement of 10. We did spend considerable time, extensive report was given at management about the mileage and how we trade in vehicles and all of that process. So it is the recommendation of the management committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the low bid of $111,832 from Midway Ford Truck Center for campus fleet vehicles, and I'll make that motion.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Thank you. The next recommendation is for the renewal of the annual contract for athletic charter bus service. The purpose of this RFP was to establish annual price contracts for charter bus services for the college's various athletic teams. On August 13, 2013, the Board of Trustees approved the establishment of annual cross of contracts with cross-road tours in White Knight Limousine with the option to renew for four additional years in one-year increments upon the approval of both parties. This renewal is for the 2015-16 academic year and represents the second of our four annual renewal options. It is the recommendation of the Management Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the renewal of the annual contract with cross-road tours for regular season athletic team charter bus service in the amount of $96,882.15 postseason athletic team charter bus service on as-needed basis in an amount not to exceed $42,568, and an additional $13,955 to allow for contingencies for possible unforeseen costs, for a total expenditure not to exceed $153,505.15 for athletic team charter bus service, and I'll make that motion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the charter bus schedule. Probably a good time to remind everybody that our women's basketball team will not have to travel anywhere on a bus next year for the national tournament that will be held here on campus. Dr. Cook, do you want to add to that?
I would just say, thank you, Mr. Chair, that Athletic Director Carl Heinrich and all of the coaches spend a considerable amount of time dealing with scheduling and trying to minimize the costs for travel. A detailed report was given where potential postseason play might be, and I just want to compliment them on the detail. I know that this might seem like a lot of money for teams to travel, but we are the beneficiary of some outstanding athletic teams that bring great awareness to our college and the area, and so I wanted to compliment them on that job.
All in favor of the motion to approve the charter bus service, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries unanimously.
Finally, Rachel Lear's presented the semi-annual review of management budget reallocations and also provided a quarterly update on college investments in the Kansas Municipal Investment Fund Pool. Mitch Borchers presented the Source Report as well as a summary of bids between $25,000 and $100,000, which can be found on page 10 of the board packet. Jeff Allen, Director of Campus Services and Energy Management, provided the monthly update on capital infrastructure projects, and this report can be found on page 25 of the packet. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and that concludes my report.
Any questions for Dr. Cook or other members of management? If not, we'll move to Audit Committee. Trustee Sharp.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Audit Committee met on August 6th. It was my first time on the Audit Committee, and it was very enlightening. There were a number of audit reports updated. The most extensive was the update on the bookstore audit, which was interesting to listen to, just from the perspective of updating actual textbook things that we hold in our hands versus these laptops and things, and the systems that we're using now to correlate the book price live versus the book price out there in the market, and making sure that we're always selling books at the most updated prices, and it's comparable to the market that's out there, and that helps us also keep track of inventory. So, there's a lot of great improvements going on in the bookstore, and we're very happy with that audit update. Also heard updates on the employee separation system access audit. There were targeted audit analysis of how quickly are we denying people access to their email or key functions after they leave the college, and that is an ongoing audit. Also received quarterly updates on P-cards, sorry, purchase cards, the police and emergency preparedness departments, ethics report line. There were 13 reports received in the last quarter. Three were anonymous, four were offered by other staff members on behalf of another individual. And I'm frankly happy with the way that the report line is going. I like to see, and I know that we don't like to see problems, but I like to see that people are using it and that they know that they have an outlet there that's anonymous, and that people have confidence in the way that things are handled. So that is, and that is also being shown in the employee engagement survey, where we're finding that employees know about the program, they know where they can report ethics concerns. The employee engagement survey showed a very high recognition of the program, the ethics report line itself, and where they can report these things. Also, the behavior intervention team, these bit teams were formed in response to a number of campus events across the country in recent years, and it's sort of that concept of if you see something, say something, and it allows people from all across campus, different parts of our organization, to report and keep an aggregate of when you have concerns about a student or a fellow, a faculty member or a staff member, that all of that is recorded in one place and is, keeps a good record for the police department. Not quite like Jon Stewart's "if you smell something, say something," but "if you see something, say something." So, we also discussed the 2015-16 working agenda, and I have a recommendation, it is the recommendation of the Audit Committee that the Board of Trustees approve the fiscal year 2015-16 Audit Committee Working Agenda, as shown in your board packet, and I make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the working agenda for the Audit Committee. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries unanimously. Are there any questions for Trustee Sharp or myself for the Audit Committee? If not, we're ready for Human Resources. Trustee Ingram.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Human Resources Committee met on Monday, August 3rd, and Dr. Corb reviewed the proposed Human Resources Committee Working Agenda for 2015-2016. That is found in your packet on page 29. I do have some highlights among the changes, if you would like for me to go ahead and include those, because they did change some things from last year. Among those changes, primarily, they are changes including the updating of terminology, which really reflect the current benefit plans that we are using this year. Item number three under compensation includes the review of faculty compensation, which was deleted as that was actually completed last year. They also added to develop a strategy for maintaining competitive salaries. That's really something that they do every, anyway, but they wanted to include that along with the assessment of internal and external salary equity. Under item number four, they added the implement, it's the last piece on there, the implement action steps based on employee engagement survey. They added this, that it is one of the academic quality improvement programs, and it is an action item, so that was included for that reason. So, those are the primary highlights of those changes, but again, it was really to reflect what's currently occurring at this time. We do have a recommendation from the Human Resources Committee. It is the recommendation, I'll go ahead and give it, of the Human Resources Committee that the Board of Trustees approve the Human Resources Committee Working Agenda for 2015-16 as it is shown subsequently in the board packet.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the Human Resources Committee Working Agenda for 2015-2016 school year. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carried. Any questions for Trustee Ingram?
Let me go ahead and complete. We do have a few other things that were listed in here. I went ahead and read that recommendation as it was included in the minutes. Dr. Corb did distribute the tentative schedule for our meeting, subject to changes needed. A wellness report was, a wellness update was given, and I had one at my desk here. I'm assuming everyone had one when they arrived. The wellness update provided an update of the physical, of the wellness program highlights from last year. There were four goals that were set by the Wellness Committee for the 2014-15 fiscal year. They included awareness and participation, focus on and promoting existing opportunities, initiating new programs, and developing outcomes-based metrics and incentives. Participation results were favorable in all categories as compared to the fiscal year. So it was really good to hear that this had been not only promoted, but was being utilized by staff, so we were very excited with that news. Several new initiatives included the Fitbit Walking Program, 500 calorie healthy choice items in the cafeteria, and Wellness on a Shoestring Curriculum. In addition, future metric and trend information will include analyzing medical cost and developing the biometric screening results for those. Looking ahead to the fiscal year 16, included but not limited to our pilot projects, which include treadmill desks, we'll have three that are distributed on campus, which I think is really exciting and sounded very, very cool. Nutritional information on all cafeteria items, more nutritional choices in vending machines, just a real emphasis on wellness and promoting wellness through leadership, which I think is a very positive thing for the campus. Benefits overview from Mr. Zimmerman. He presented a benefits overview for the benefit year of 2015-16, included the following updates, which included employee benefits. I will highlight the three employee groups at JCCC with differing benefit options. As you're aware of, that has been a change this year with that Group Three being added. Part-time employees working 30 more hours per week, but less than 40, began as of June 1 of 2015. Also discussed were retirement incentive programs for next year, changes to the CAPERS post-retirement earnings limitation, and then just some issues on the horizon include the new Affordable Care Act reporting provisions, medical plan contract provisions changing for the 2016-2017 benefit year, and potential Affordable Care Act Cadillac tax liability in the future. So, our next meeting is scheduled for October 5th, and if there are no other questions, that concludes my report.
Any questions? Not, thank you.
You're welcome.
The next item on the agenda, learning quality. Trustee Cross.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate going last. Thank you. The Learning Quality Committee met at 8:00 AM on August 3, 2015, here at the GEB 137. Trustees Nancy Ingram and I were both present. Mr. Andy Anderson welcomed Trustee Ingram to her first learning quality meeting, and we're glad to have her aboard. She was elected to the Board of Trustees in April of this year and will serve on the committee for their current academic year. There were several presentations made, and we have a few recommendations here tonight. Andy Anderson presented the proposal, a proposal to the Learning Quality Committee to approve the working agenda for 2015-16, and that generally, just so the public is aware, Mr. Chair, I know everyone here is, our job on that committee is to monitor the learning and engagement process, monitor outcomes. Our staff and administration have done a great job with the key performance indicators. I think working to define what it is that we do. Some of our allies and members of our legislature have, I think, justly asked what is it that goes on here and what do we do? And I'm, while I have some criticism I could always offer, I think we could better assess certain economic or social impact from the college, but I think the KPI do do a good job of helping us and frankly, the public, understand what goes on here. Additionally, we monitor the faculty and workforce, and it is the recommendation of the Learning Quality Committee that the Board of Trustees approve the 2015-16 Learning Quality Committee Working Agenda as is subsequently shown in the board packet. And I so move.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There was an update from Andy Anderson from KBOR on the Transfer and Articulation Council. It's known as the TAAC. Mr. Anderson shared that the TAAC meets annually with faculty members from all over Kansas to review course outlines and syllabi to determine seamless transferability for students. Students who complete these approved courses at any Kansas Public Community College, Technical College, or University can transfer those courses to any other public institution. This year, JCCC will host a meeting, and 10 more courses will be reviewed for transferability. To view the 56 courses that have already been approved by the TAAC for Kansas system-wide transfer, please visit the kansasregions.org/transfer-articulation. Next, Mr. Chair, we discuss the academic calendar for the upcoming year. Clarissa Craig presented that the 2017-18 academic calendar, which was reviewed and discussed and approved to move forward for full board approval. Calendar details are shown subsequently in the consent agenda. As directed by the Memorandum of Agreement between the Faculty Association and the Board of Trustees, a calendar committee was formed and is recommending the academic calendar for the 2017-18 year as shown in the following pages of this board packet, and the calendar shell is recommended to be approved to allow advanced planning for the curriculum development, administrative coordination, or state and federal legislation. Some dates may need to be revised due to the contract negotiations, area school district schedule adjustments, or curricular changes. But it is, Mr. Chair, the recommendation of the Learning Quality Committee and of the college administration that the Board of Trustees approve the 2017-18 academic calendar as shown subsequently in this board packet.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Do you approve the academic calendar? Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carried.
Further, Mr. Chair, we discuss the affiliation, cooperation, articulation, and reverse transfer agreements. Presentation was made by Ms. Clarissa Craig. She's the Associate Vice President of Instruction, and stated that her department is responsible to work with legal and various organizations to facilitate the affiliation agreement that provide technical placements for students who need practical experience to complete their curriculum. The committee approved two affiliation agreements for nursing, one for practical nursing, and one for healthcare interpreting, and will request agreements be moved forward for full board approval. Complete details can be found in the consent agenda portion of this board packet. Other agreements presented for informal purposes were, one, facility use agreement renewal with the Shawnee Mission School District for college-close-to-home classes, and two, memorandum of understanding with Children's Mercy Hospital for Instructional Services provided by a hospital staff member for the neurodiagnostic technology program. These agreements will be reviewed by the Management Committee at their meeting in September and then brought forward for full board approval. We also had a review and update of student policies presented by Mr. Randy Weber, who brought forward proposals to update policies and procedures noted below. He stated that proposed changes will allow a committee to determine and define extenuating circumstances rather than have the decisions made by individuals in the administrative office. The committee will meet every other week, and we've made up of staff from operational areas, financial aid, records, the bursar's office, et cetera. Ms. Tanya Wilson, our legal counsel, shared that the proposed changes to the two tuition refund policies are connected to the KPI process and are very closely in line with other Kansas schools surveyed. Mr. Weber also presented the two student disciplinary, excuse me, Randy presented two student disciplinary action policies. One was updated and the other one was deleted. Discrimination policies were also revamped to align with the current human resource policies. The student complaints policy change was requested by legal. Significant change is that the right to appeal will lie basically within the branch. Deciding factors will be at the dean level. Ms. Wilson also said that at all times, the Policy Procedure Committee is reviewing five to seven policy procedure items reviewed, needed due to new legislation, new law, and/or new guidelines within specific areas. Our legal department has also fully reviewed board policies in the 100 series, and requests for the board to review and approve will be presented in the next few months. If I may, the Learning Quality Committee has thus reviewed and recommended updates to the following policies: tuition refund policy, tuition refunds, appeals policy, student disciplinary action policy, student disciplinary action appeals policy, student complaints policy, and student discrimination, harassment, or retaliation complaint policy. The proposed updates serve to consolidate and clarify the appropriate college processes for reviewing and deciding matters related to student complaints and appeals. The proposed updates include consolidation and conversion of the tuition refund appeals policy, and the student complaints policy and operating procedures that will be subject to approval by the president, and I'm very sorry to read that rote, but I felt all of it was necessary because of some of the discussion that we had about due process and that people need to be made aware of these changes. Therefore, Mr. Chair, it is the recommendation of the Learning Quality Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the proposed amendments to the tuition refund policy, student disciplinary action policy, student disciplinary action appeals policy, and student discrimination, harassment, or retaliation complaint. retaliation complaint, along with the deletion of the tuition refund appeals policy and student complaints policy as shown subsequently in the board packet, and I so move.
I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded to do what trustee Cross just said. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried unanimously.
Mr. Chair, I'll just redirect the board and any members of the public that care to look at changes in these policies that are in the board packet. The packet is publicly available, and that will conclude my report. And I was joking about going last.
Any other questions for trustee Cross? Trustee Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a comment. I'd like to compliment Andy Anderson and all the faculty involved for their patience on the articulation agreement process. That's been an issue that parents have been concerned about when students have to retake a course when going to a four-year school. I'm pleased to see that we're up to 56, another 10. I know that you spend a lot of time with your friends at state meetings to try and get everybody to agree that a course taken at a community college is the same as taken at a four-year school, so thank you very much for your hard work and all the staff involved. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. We'll move on to the president's recommendations for action. Treasurer's Report. Treasurer Lindstrom.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Trustee Cross, if you will last, I don't know what that makes me.
The best goes last.
No, I'm not last. I am pleased to, it is my pleasure to present the treasurer's report for the month ending June 30, 2015, which can be found on pages 48 through 58 in your packet. Please note that the reported figures are preliminary and do not reflect the college's fiscal year ending adjustments. Some items of note include, on pages, on page numbered 49 in the packet, the treasurer's report, you will find the general PTE funds summary. There you will note that fiscal '15 revenues were approximately $5 million higher than fiscal '14. This is primarily, primarily due to ad valorem and as a result of county growth assessed valuations. On pa, on the same page, please note that the general PTE funds expenses for fiscal '215 were approximately $124 million, which is essentially flat to 2014, and 89% of actual 2015 budgeted amount of $140 million. In section eight, numbered on page 57 in your packet, please note that as of June 30, 2015, the college had a book balance, book cash balance of, in investments, in all funds of $101 million, point, $101.9 million, and an unencumbered book balance of $85.9 million, approximately $10.8 million more than the same time last year. Excellent job. Expenditures in the primary operating fund are within approved budgetary limits, and it is the recommendation of the college administration that the Board of Trustees approve the treasurer's report for the month ending June 30, 2015, subject to audit, and I would make that motion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the treasurer's report. Is there, are there any trustees that would like to have any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Adopted unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Monthly report to the board. Mr. President.
Thank you, trustee Musil. I'm very sad to announce that there'll be no lightning round tonight.
It'll be slower, or?
We'll pick it up. This week, it's gonna be a long report. This week was in service, and it's great to have everyone back on campus, even Ron. And we, we dedicated, we dedicated this week to professional development days, and on Johnson County Community College, at Johnson County Community College, it is quite the production. There are so many people involved campus-wide to bring this together, to make it happen, and we cannot thank everyone enough. I'd like to share with you some of the highlights that I experienced just over the last couple of days. First of all, we had a JCCC Professional Development Days app for our phone so we could follow the, all the sessions. And once Terry loaded it on my phone, then I was able to do so, and I have to say it was a huge upgrade from, in the past, with the booklet. So hats off to Karen for making that happen. It was absolutely terrific. Breakout sessions were amazing. We had 108 sessions led by over 60 college faculty and staff. I personally took how to tweet, and I'm proud to announce I have 97 followers. Stephanie, how many do you have?
97 million, 110 million.
1,500.
1,500, okay. Long way to go. And also a session on millennials, which was fascinating. Both of those were led by Keith Davenport out of Student Services. The breakfast was terrific. They kind of changed things up a little bit, moved around some food distribution points, added some informational tables supporting wellness, brightly colored tablecloths and decorative sheets on the tables. The food was great. There was nutritional information, especially about the nutritional benefits of biscuits and gravy. Importantly, everything was recycled or put into compost, and the students oversaw that. Hats off to Jay Glass and his team. They did a remarkable job. The all-staff meeting, I'd like to, we had a news report, and I'd like to thank those trustees in attendance whose schedules allowed them to be there. Trustees Musil, Sharp, Cook, and Ingram were all there, and we, I think, had a pretty entertaining approach to sharing news about the college and things that are happening. The closing song was highlighted by a rousing, rousing performance by Nancy Whedon from Dining Services. The JCCC ready-for-prime-time backup singers were remarkable. The Carlson Center staff did a great job, and all the news reporters, including students Samantha, Ricky Weller, were excellent. Credit goes to Julie Haas for writing and producing this thing, and for those who saw it, you have to realize that we have, we had very minimal time for rehearsal.
Oh, I don't doubt it.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. With that kind of support, we'll charge on. We had a wonderful Hall of Fame celebration yesterday honoring Carolyn Caddell and Fred Krebs, two really iconic members of our faculty here over the years. It was absolutely terrific. Trustee Musil made some wonderful comments to kick it off. A service pin ceremony later in the afternoon in which we recognize people's service at the college. We had 11 30-year employees, 30, excuse me, 31 25-year employees, 16 20-year employees, 40 15-year employees, 61 10-year employees, and 82 5-year employees. Absolutely amazing. A wonderful ceremony. Trustee Ingram was there, and I think everyone was, was really pleased by that. Last evening, we had a College Now pep rally in which all the College Now teachers in Johnson County show up. Trustee Musil gave a rousing, a rousing talk. It's, it was rousing, and it's always a fun, fun event. This morning, we had the all-staff coffee. We had a wellness theme, things that were presented, besides having coffee and, and little breakfast-type munchies. We had tables on financial, financial wellness, strength, sustainability, nutrition, wellness programming, and the corporate challenge. You might want to know there's a distance-walking thing in the corporate challenge, and perhaps next year you could be a part of that. Tomorrow morning, or excuse me, Saturday morning, we'll have an adjunct orientation, which will be fantastic. So, there are so many people to thank. One, the campus always looks fantastic, and special kudos to Rex Hayes for bringing that all together and for getting the roads done on time. That was super. And also to Karen Martley, head of Staff Development, who brought all this, this together over the past couple of days. It's a Herculean task and a great job, so we're very fortunate. A couple other things, you have an, the president's report in front of you. Considerable effort by everyone who contributes to this report. There are two themes, two themes. One's one of accomplishment, and I think the first example was the Billington Library, where they were one of 203 grant recipients nationally to receive a competitive Latino-Americans 500 Years of History Grant from the National Endowment for Humanities and the American Library Association. That's really neat. Mark Dagonar, Mark Soales, and Miguel Morales, all from the library, are a part of that. Miguel Morales will serve as the project coordinator. And also, you'll notice that there's considerable outreach throughout that report, as our people are all over the community and demonstrating their service to the community, and also a lot of reaching out to other organizations to expand our own knowledge base, to find better ways to doing things. It's very exciting. Yesterday, at the all-staff presentation, Dr. Korbe presented some breaking news regarding our key performance indicators. Dr. Korbe was so excited about that that she failed to come to the meeting tonight, but Judy is attending a family reunion out of state, so that's why she's not here. But our Noel Levitt student satisfaction scores came in as a college, and we made great progress over the last year. This is such a tribute to everyone on campus who worked extremely hard to put students first. As you know, these key performance indicators as a way of monitoring our performance has been a priority, and the trustees have made this a priority. So I'm going to ask Natalie Almond Byers to, from our institutional research area, who works directly with this data, to provide some greater insights into the accomplishment. Natalie?
Thank you. And thank you for having me here. I'm excited. We have some great news to share around our key performance indicator, specifically student satisfaction. There's just this word, we, I've been hearing key performance indicators throughout, throughout the session, and while we have a variety of key performance indicators, tonight, I'm going to specifically talk around the student satisfaction indicators. So just to kind of provide a little bit of background on that key performance indicator, those benchmarks come from the Noel Levitt Student Satisfaction Survey. And what that instrument does, it asks students to report or respond to how important an item is to them here at Johnson County Community College, and then how satisfied they are with that item. And then it kind of, it allows us to look at what's the gap between how important and how satisfied. The results we're sharing today are from administration from the spring 15, and we did, the spring cycle, we opened it up and administered the survey via the web as well, so we did it not only in the classroom, but over the web, in which nearly doubled our student responses. Looking at our results overall, it was representative of our J, Johnson County Community College student, student body overall, which is important. Slightly high on our female, but that's to be expected. More females respond to surveys generally than males. I think each of you have a copy. It's the, the 2015 value is not showing up here, but we can see through each of our benchmarks, we, there's significant gains across each of the areas. And I'd just like to remind that these are in order of importance to the students. So when students are completing the survey, the most important benchmark area, instructional effectiveness, then leading to concern for individual. I think it's important to note, this is on a seven-point scale, so one very satisfied, or one not at all satisfied to very satisfied. And I'd like to point out that safety and security has moved up in the rank of importance. Last year it was the fifth, now it's moved up to the third. So I think that's just an awareness of the times we're, we're living in. The green line is actually the, our goal that went through the strategic planning process and our key performance indicators. We set this line at the 75th percentile based on the National Community College Benchmark and Project Results. And as we can see, our 2015, we are at or above the 75th percentile. So much kudos to just the work that's been going on across campus, messaging from, from our leadership around the key performance indicators and student success. To just get a little, a little bit more detail here, the, well, this shows, now this is going to show us Johnson County Community College's mean score compared to the National Community College that participated in the Levitts, which is just over 200 other community colleges participated in this. And we can see while we had gains, worse statistically higher than the National Community College's scores as well, in each of our benchmark areas. And this, this slide here, so each of those benchmark items are made up of individual survey questions. And this here, I'm just going to highlight, these are the top six in order of importance for, for a student. So the quality of instruction I receive in most of my classes is excellent. This is the most important item for our students. And as you can see on a seven-point scale, the importance is 6.48, and their satisfaction is 5.82. And then we also provide that same comparison to the National Community College responses. So as we look through here, it's around scheduling, instruction, flexibility, and being able to get the classes they want, and having knowledgeable faculty in the field. Something else here, what's important to our students, important to students nationally. But we can see here also that our satisfaction level in each of these items of our students are statistically higher, significantly higher than the community colleges participating. So then for more broadly, how has your college experience met your, met your expectations? And this, this range has run much worse to much, much better, again, a seven-point scale, another increase in 2015, as well as overall satisfaction with your experience here thus far. We see an increase in that as well. And if you had to do it over again, would you enroll here? Which I think that's just great, if you're, if 6.24 is our 2015 mean, and if we're looking at that's from one to seven, to me, I'm saying students, there's really that question, they would re-enroll and attend Johnson County Community College again. And this again, just takes a snapshot of those same items comparing our student responses to the National Community College scores from '15, and we can see again where we're, our students' level of satisfaction is, is, is higher. So our, our strengths, based on this most recent results, we, we list them here, and it's again in the order of importance to students. And how the strengths are identified is there, there are items that are above the midpoint in and for the student, and in the upper quartile satisfaction. So the students are telling us these are, those are very important, and we're very satisfied. Campus is safe and secure, which I think we can kind of foresee that with the moving of the safety and security to the third most important indicator. Faculty are knowledgeable in their fields, convenient way of paying the school bill. There's been work around, around that here. The campus is well-maintained, and we've heard that throughout the evening, and students obviously recognize that, and the institution has a good reputation within our community. The plus side indicates that, again, this is where our satisfaction scores were higher than, than national scores from the community colleges that participated in the Levitts. So with strengths, what this instrument gives us also are identified opportunities, opportunities or challenges for improvement. So we can see the quality of instruction I receive in most of my classes is excellent. So students rate this with importance of 6.48, and their satisfaction is 5.82. So to come, where we're coming up with these opportunities, is that there's a gap there. So students are telling us this is very important to us, and there's an opportunity to improve the satisfaction level of our students.
Is there a particular size of gap that makes it an opportunity to report here?
Overall, it's around, if it's one of the like .66 and higher, seem to be that those are the ones that are, yeah, maybe it's like .6 and higher, seem to be anything above that was making the opportunity list, so. And we'd like to point out, though, while these are opportunities, and many of them were addressed through our strategic plan, task teams, and I think we've seen improvements in, in the items, where within, while they're opportunities for us, I think if we refer back to an earlier slide, these are challenges for other institutions as well. Our satisfaction- Our satisfaction, student satisfaction level is, is higher than the community colleges' scores, and I think we're aware of that through our work, through the strategic planning and key performance indicators. So what the, the blue star represents is that these are items that have been opportunities, have been reoccurring opportunities in our Noel Levitts administration. So these are opportunities that appeared in 2014 and possibly 2012 when we administered the, the survey, and many of them are being addressed, are recognized specifically through our, our work, again, with the gold teams and task teams. So just in summary, it gives an opportunity to, for celebration in a way that we have positive gains across all of our benchmarks. Important to note that safety and security has increased in importance to our students, and we're responding to these opportunities currently and will, and will continue to grew this. And as, so the next steps, we'll be kind of, continue to kind of dig into the information a little bit more. One example, if you know, we have a growing minority student population on campus, so looking at the satisfaction level across different types of students, I think will be important and would help the guided pathways initiative that we have to go on here in the So again, revisiting our key performance indicators, I would like to say we, just reiterate that we see increases across all of our key performance indicators, so the collective work that's going on across campus. Does anybody have any questions?
I think we're going to have a lot of these. Trustee Cross?
Thank you Natalie.
Mr. Chair.
I just want to say thank you for all of this, most proud and happy about this report. With respect to the strengths versus the opportunities, I have to say that there seems to be some inconsistencies in, in Ruffalo and Noel Levitts as a consulting firm, is that right?
Well, they do satisfy, a variety of satisfaction surveys.
Okay.
That's how we do them.
But it just seems to me that there's some inconsistencies. How can we have 6.24, would you do it all over again, enroll here, and then, somehow I'd still feel compelled to speak for the faculty, because the strengths seem to focus on the administration, and then the opportunities are all focused at either the faculty or the advising. I just want to ask, how is it that, what exactly, here's my question.
What exactly do the opportunities mean?
So opportunities mean that those are items that, when we list out all items on the instrument, those are the ones that are coming up that are the most, most important. And while not to say that students are not satisfied, there's opportunity for improvement there, that there's a decent gap when you subtract the importance mean away from the satisfaction mean.
If I may, just to follow, it doesn't mean we're attacking anybody?
No.
Because overall, our students are very satisfied.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay.
And I, I probably could have hammered that home, although across, we had increases across nearly every item on the, on the instrument from 14 to 15. It's very possible.
Trustee Cook?
Thank you, Chair. I, I just want to, to congratulate this board of trustees and administration for bringing together a mission statement of inspiring lives, inspiring life, transforming lives, strengthening communities, along with a strategic plan with four specific goals that tie into these key performance indicators. Oftentimes organizations will set a mission and a vision and a plan, and they're not aligned, so I really want to compliment everybody for sticking to it in this, in terms of making sure that we have results. As I commented through, I think I commented correctly, there are 18 subtopics. And while we exceed the national average in every one of those 18 and have made significant gains, I think it's noteworthy to know that in four of those 18 were above six. So I appreciate understanding that seven was the highest ranking one could get. And that 6.24 for the, for, if I come back here again, if I had to do it all over again, is really gratifying. While we should be excited about these, from a competitive danger standpoint that I have, I, I hope that we continue to put the emphasis on our, our mission and our vision and our strategic plan to always get better. Ideally, I would like all those categories to be six, five and above, and I realize that's a challenge. But congratulations to the faculty and staff and everybody, these are really, really good results. One other comment, Mr. Chair, some of us are in our Monday noon Rotary Club, and a couple of weeks ago, Mike made a nice presentation on career ed and...
That was Mike Stoller from Continuing Education.
Right, Continuing Education. And what's interesting to me, we had at least three spontaneous remarks from our board members that attended Johnson County Community College, at how that experience here changed their lives, transformed lives and strengthened communities. And that was spontaneous, and it ties in with, would I go there again if I had the chance to go back? So congratulations Natalie, to everybody. I'm very pleased with these results, thank you.
Trustee Lister?
I just, I want to echo some of the comments that Trustee Cook just, just made. I also want to congratulate our President, Joe Sachin, for his leadership with this, and it starts at the top, and I appreciate that. And also want to include everyone in the college that Jerry men, mentioned, and also the faculty as well, everybody who makes this happen. I have a question though, however, as it relates to a concern raised earlier by Trustee Cross, as it relates to tuition. Was there any expressed from, from student satisfaction on concerns related to tuition?
Interesting, so if they don't offer that question, they do ask how important the cost is in your decision to attend, but they don't have to counter, how satisfied are you with it, with the cost of attendance at the institution? I want to say the importance, it was, so they ask about cost, financial aid, academic reputation, size of the institution, and opportunity place boards, cost of those items, what's the most important to our students?
Any other questions Natalie?
Go ahead, Trustee. The, with respect to campus safety and security, this may not be for Natalie, when does our gun ban expire?
Line one, 2017, absent change in legislation for our hour installation of adequate security measures at every door at every building, or select buildings, so.
Thank you Natalie.
I noted one of the opportunities is the amount of student parking space on campus is adequate. I'd love to see the results, because of any campus in the world where students say, parking is just fine.
And that, that would come up in another conversation as well, we looked, the community colleges, it's a similar challenge or opportunity at the other institutions, but so that actually, and actually, parking is a pretty big area compared to, I mean, perhaps.
You have fully comments on KPIs?
First of all, thanks for the hard work, it's your staff, and faculty. I mean, this type of improvement's really a team effort, everything about this campus is a team effort. So all the way from people from our security forces and, and everyone who works in every offices, special kudos to Randy Weber, Student Services, I see Alicia back there. It really takes everybody coming together to make these things work. So congratulations to everyone, and special thanks. Lastly, that dotted green line represents the 75th percentile. I think we're better than the 75th percentile. So we'll continue to work hard, we'll continue to try to move that thing up and, and establish a new standard, but thank you for your support in this.
Thank you Natalie, very much.
That concludes the report.
Any questions or comments on the President's report?
I'm going to highlight one thing I read in there, and I think it's important because it's again a team effort, our insurance and risk management, we are self-funded for workers' compensation. The report that's in, in the President's report shows that the last fiscal year ended our most successful self-insured work comp year thus far. That's a credit to everybody on campus. Our biggest problems are still slip and fall, which happens everywhere, but I think it's, you know, it was a, I'm sure, I think it was done right on the board, but it's an important, big step to go self-insured and then trust your employees to be careful about what they do and to do things right, and to work with them on ergonomics and everything else to avoid work comp injuries. Another big expense for an awful lot of employers, and our faculty and staff have obviously done a good job on that, so I wanted to highlight that, Mr. President. And the other, the English and Journalism Division did select Destiny of Republic for the mandatory reading, which was my recommendation when it came up, and so I want to thank them for having that great choice. I don't have any old business that I know of, or any new business, so I'll move to report from board liaisons, and the first one is Faculty Association President Ron Palchek. Ron, thank you. Ron was at the College Now pep rally last night, thank you for that too.
Oh, thank you. Thank you Chairman, good evening. Faculty have returned to campus, we're all ready to get started with the task of teaching and learning this Monday, August the 17th. There's excitement in the air, trust me, we're all ready, or not ready, we welcome back our students, the new and the returning, for the start of this new semester and school year. We have, we have almost all of our meetings we have, we had an all college meeting yesterday, we had 300-plus students last night, and faculty from the College Now program, it was really exciting, I'm the person that does the statistics. The Trusted Musso and Dr. Subjek was in attendance, and I want to thank you for your close quote in the term. And Dr. Trusted Musso, I did want to answer your question, yes, four out of three people don't understand fractions. But on the other hand, there's three types of mathematicians, those who can count and those who can't. I'm also a mathematician. There are faculty meetings, we're this morning, all faculty meeting, lots of new and exciting activities, interaction between faculty, administrators, staff, trustees, plus adjunct meetings are going on just as we're speaking right now, the math department's running their adjunct meeting, so I couldn't even attend. Tomorrow we'll finish with division and department meetings for our last minute preparation for the new year. I do want to make it clear that at the all faculty meeting, we did give a reward to Stephen J. Wilson, Professor of Mathematics, past Assistant Chair of the Mathematics Department. He was awarded the JCCC Faculty Association Leadership Award for recognition for his outstanding leadership and service to the Mathematics Department, faculty, colleague, community, professional involvement for betterment of teaching and learning in the community colleges across this country. You have to, he had got a standing ovation when we awarded this. And to give you some ideas, he's a recipient of two Berlin and Northern State of Defense Awards at the college. He's recipient of one distinguished service award, he didn't really apply it once. He is, has been past president of the Kansas Mathematics Association of Two-Year Colleges, he did that for two years. He was the central regional vice president of the American Mathematics Association of Two-Year Colleges. He was the central region which represented 13 states, and he visited every three state local community colleges in all 14 states, and grew up in North Dakota, and out to Utah, that part of Wisconsin. He is now a secretary for Kansas Mathematics Association of Two-Year Colleges to present. He is a member of a editorial board for the Mathematics Association of America, which is through all the way to grad school. Very impressive, and he has more and more and more publications that he has done, he's written his own textbook that he uses in his business mathematics. All the proceeds from that textbook that he makes on this campus is donated to foundation for student scholarship, and he's written a book. We're going to miss him when he retires, maybe we won't miss him. Steve has said a high standard of goals to all achieve, and thanks you, Steve, for his service to the college and to the field of mathematics. And as we've heard earlier, we've improved in all five of our key performance indicators, focusing on student successes from the last three years according to the JCC student responses to that annual Noel Levitt survey based on instructional effectiveness, registration effectiveness, academic advising, counseling, and safety and security. I was really impressed. I do have to give kudos to the counseling department, I think they have the greatest increase, and I think the leadership of Student Services and the council board, I want to thank them personally. And with the guidance of the faculty, administrators, staff, and board of trustees, we all have contributed as a team. This is a great team effort, started right at the top, right here to the board, right to Dr. Subjek, right on down to the custodian on the ground. We were all, and that, we had some light, nice focus, dense and detailed. And to our student satisfaction with the college indicated by the Noel Levitt Center. As the JC mission says, I'm Mr. Trustee Cook, JCC inspires learning to transform lives and strengthen communities. And we in the college are moving in the right direction with collaboration between the faculty, administration, staff, and trustee. And I want to thank you, and are there any more questions, Phil?
Questions, Ron?
Good question, sure. The Faculty Association meetings are still Mondays?
No, our meetings, so thank you for mentioning that. Our meetings will be Tuesdays, the second Tuesday of every month, starting on September the 8th. They will be at 2 o'clock, and they will be in the Carlson Center Room 212. And I will send an invitation all out to, I send an invitation to the faculty party tomorrow night, I will call and then everyone who can, if they can.
Thank you.
You're more welcome. Now that will be for the fall semester, we'll be looking at the spring semester secret adjusted, but the fall will be the second Tuesday of every month, starting September the 8th, December.
Please share with the faculty our thanks for their efforts in this key performance initiative. I'm going to, I'm going to, I reminded the story with President Johnson was president, he went down to the Houston State House Center, it wasn't called Johnson, and he was up with all the dignitaries, the astronauts, and after the, after the ceremony, he goes to custodians standing over in the corner, and he, being a precarious guy, walked over to the custodian and said, hi, I'm Lyndon Johnson, what do you do here? And the custodian said, I'm working to put him out on the moon. And it was that, that team effort, and everybody understood that they, they participated a role, so I hope everybody, the faculty and staff who stands out here, thanks for your leadership. Look forward to a good year.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Johnson County Research Triangle, Trustee Lister?
Mr. Chairman, I have big shoes to fill as representative for the Johnson County Education Research Triangle Authority. We met on Monday, July 20th. The meeting was held at 7:30 AM at the Kansas State University Oletha Campus. And as a reminder to those in the audience here, those viewing, and to myself, I'm going to give a brief introduction or a brief reminder of what the Johnson County Education Research Triangle Authority is. It was created in November 2008 when Johnson County residents invested in the county's future by voting a 1/8 cent sales tax. The proceeds from this tax, first assessed in April of 2009, generate $150 million a year to fund higher education and degree offerings throughout, through a unique partnership among Johnson County, University of Kansas, and Kansas State University. The initiative includes the development of the Business Engineering Science and Technology for Best Building and New Degree Programs at KU Edwards Campus in Ovaland Park, the International Animal Health and Food Safety Institute at K-State's Innovation Campus in Oletha, and the University of Kansas Clinical Research Center in Fairway. The economic impact over the next two decades is, is expected to be well over 1.4 billion, and it is also expected to attract millions of dollars in private and public donations and research grants. All, all revenues collected by the tax can only be used at the university's Johnson County locations. The JSERT, as it is called, J-C-E-R-T Authority oversees the funds and is responsible for ensuring that the use of public funds complies with all state and local laws. The seven-member board is comprised, the board is comprised of seven elected officials from Johnson County, appointed to four-year terms, and they may serve, each member may serve two, two separate terms. The board meetings are subject to the Kansas Open Meetings Act and the Kansas Open Records Act, and the current board members are as follows. Ed Eilat, Johnson County Commission Chair, was appointed by the Kansas Board of Regents. Mike Bame is the Vice Chair, and he is the Mayor of Lenexa, he was the Kansas University Appointment. Carl Gerlock is the Mayor of Ovaland Park, and he is the Kansas State University Appointment. Kay Wolf, Senator Baumgartner, our own Senator Baumgartner's, two of her colleagues... Kay Wolf, Senator Baumgartner, our own Senator Baumgartner's, two of her colleagues are also on this committee, appointed by Governor Brownback. Kay Wolf is a Kansas State senator, and Jeff Melcher is also a Kansas State senator. Jason Osterhaus represents the Board of County Commissioners, and I humbly representing the Johnson County Community College. For those who want additional information, you can go on the internet and get additional information about the triangle. It's www.jokotriangle-spelled-out.com. Receipts for the past two months were as follows, in June, sales tax receipts amounted to $1,358,734.87 in July of 2015, again, $1,358,734, and coincidentally, 87 cents again. Our next meeting is scheduled for, our next meeting is scheduled for September 21st at 7:30 a.m. at the KU campus, KU Edwards Campus in Ovaland Park, just up the street. And, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Thank you for that reminder for all of us, because voters adopted this, and sometimes we forget what we did, or why it's there. Other questions for Trustee Lindrum? Not, we're ready for the Kansas Association of Community College Trustee Liaison Report from the president of the Kansas Association of Community College Trustees, Trustee Dr. Gerald Cook.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Actually, I, well, under the president, we changed officers in June, but thank you for that.
I'm not going through that again.
But a passage.
Okay.
I have no report, other than, because we've not met since our last meeting, but our next meeting will be September 11th and 12th at Loud County Community College. And if anyone is interested in traveling to the north-central part of our state, please let us know. I believe Dr. Sopchak and I will be attending that meeting. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Cook. That concludes our reports. The next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. The board considers, on the consent agenda, items that are a number of routine and consensus items that are typically considered collectively and approved in a single motion and vote. Any member of the board may request that an item be taken off the consent agenda and considered, debated, and voted upon separately. Are there any items any board member would like to remove from the consent agenda and consider separately? If none, do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda as printed? Second, it's been moved and seconded to adopt the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carried unanimously. We will have an executive session today, and I would like, I'd ask for a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing consultation with an attorney, which would be deemed a privilege in the attorney-client relationship, in order to protect the privilege in the board's communications with its attorney on legal matters. The session will last 30 minutes, and no action will be taken during the session. We'd also like to invite President Sopchak and our legal counsel, Tanya Wilson, to join this executive session. Is there such a motion? Been moved by Trustee Cross and seconded by Trustee Indrum to go into executive session for 30 minutes. We will start that at 6:55, and come out of executive session no later than 7:25. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries 7-0, we will start in three and a half minutes. Thank you, everybody. The board has returned to open session after our executive session at 7:23 p.m. No action was taken during the executive session, and there's nothing else on the agenda, so I'll be ready to hear a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moving second, and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carried, we are adjourned. Thank you.